Give the people a break. Host on this table it.
It's a habit.
Anybody else who wishes to address the commission?
What do we stand as far as this ten day rule as the comments that debate is not?
It's this contract, it's been before you for ten days.
Don't you dare.
It's been before you for ten days.
We're talking about ten day rule bill.
You're welcome to have a copy, I think you need it.
That's fine.
Okay, sir. Thank you, please. We now don't do the committee.
And that's what the ten day rule says.
Without without the ability to look into that further, I mean, if that's what the ten day rule said, and we're trying to comply with it, then that's what the ten day rule says.
You need to disable this.
It's like everybody's first day.
Is there a motion to suspend?
Oh my God.
No comments, please, from the audience to give you an opportunity to speak. You spoke. It's time now for the commissioners to discuss among themselves. We were trying to seek a legal opinion. Sir?
Tried.
Can you, a motion to suspend?
Thank you for watching another Lakeway audits video. Today is November the first, twenty twenty one. It is four fifty P M. We are getting ready to go into the special sessions um meeting for Hamblin County in regards to signing the contract for Blaine construction in the amount of, I believe, ninety four million dollars. Um and that doesn't include all the other fees and stuff. That's just for the construction through Blaine sale, um Blaine construction. So this meeting is going to be pretty interesting. Let's go ahead and we're going to head on in.
The Hamblin County Commission meeting is now a session. The honorable power chip we preside, please remain standing. Thank you, Harley. We want to call this special meeting of the Hamblin County Legislative Body to order at this time. Would you join me as we pray? Father of heaven, we certainly are grateful and thankful for this study. We give our thanks to you for your faithfulness to each of us. You truly have been good to us. We give you thanks, Father, that you've allowed each of us the privilege to be citizens of the United States of America. And we pray, Father, for your blessings upon our country. We pray for your blessings upon our county. And we ask that you would give us wisdom and guidance as we deliberate the business that's on our agenda tonight. May we give you the honor and the glory, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen. Commissioner Gohn, would you please leave us in our pledge?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. I want to remind the commissioners, please, to make sure your lights are on at this time. And we are going to do the roll call. Madam Turk, would you take care of that for us, please?
Jed Payser.
Here.
Chris Setcha.
Here.
Randy Gore.
Here.
Thomas Stowe. Tim Goen.
Here.
Bobby Hahn.
Here.
Tim Horr.
Here.
Joe Hudson.
Here.
Adley Norman.
Here.
Mike Reed.
Here.
Wayne Mason.
Here.
Howard Sheen.
Here.
Jim Stapp.
Here.
Taylor Moore.
Here.
Thirteen great candidates.
We do have a form present, so we're prepared to transact things. At this time, we would entertain a couple of comments from the citizens of the community. You'll have three minutes. If you would please come to the podium, state your name at this time and your address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Edgar Green. I live at forty nine eighty one Cameron Road. For what you're getting ready to vote on tonight, I hope you've given it some seriously thought. I sent you the last time and I listened to Thomas Stowe run to your attention that we had a plea for a basic jail. That is for the deed, is that denied? It is not for a justice center. It is not for new offices for Teresa West. And it certainly isn't for additional offices for the judges. The burden that you are getting ready to place on the taxpayers of Hamblin County, their children, their grandchildren, and possibly another generation is uncalled for, unnecessary, and unconscionable for you folks to do tonight. Some of you are businessmen that I thought were fairly smart general. I am beginning to wonder, some of you have debt in finance. I am beginning to wonder how you done your business, if you were honest or if you were otherwise. And that's just my preference tonight. But I don't understand how in the name of God that you can do this tonight. I don't understand what makes you want to push forward for something that you know is going to put us in debt to thirty four. The schools will come back for more money. There are a great many of you tonight that came from the school systems. And you know who you are, so I'll be polite and not tell you but none. But how with a clear conscience can you do this? Schools are just like homes. They have needs to be maintained, whether it's air conditioning, whether it's buildings, whatever the need is. And you just know they're coming back. So how can you sit there and put an additional burden on the taxpayers when you know they don't have to raise property taxes to do this? And it's not going to be a hamburger, folks. Hamburger might be twelve bucks maximum. Our tax bill will be a whole lot more than that. For the businesses that pay a higher level of commercial taxes, it's going to be even worse. I just don't understand how you can pray to God and then make a mockery of him sitting here tonight. I don't understand how you can do this with a clear conscience. You know, my pastor preached Sunday night, if God was for you, who could be against you? And I'm telling you right now, God is on our side on this for doing the right thing. That's how it boils down to is the bright light. And I just don't understand how you can be men, a woman, and do this. Do you really think your neighbors are going to bank you? I could tell you point one yet for the district that I live in, no. No. For the district in the twelfth district, no. I talked to one of them today, they asked for your financials, sir, and I gave it to them.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it.
Thank you for the privilege. I hope you folks bank twice before you vote tonight.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
When this jail was discussed at the vice commission meeting, the commissioner set up here, talked about how that the plans for this jail was just like the jail built in Sullivan County. Proceeded along about it. And then made the remark how Sullivan County is the most successful county in East Tennessee. East Macodak, all the facilities they have up there. Well, then we're not Sullivan County. Moretown, Hamblin County is the poorest county in the state of Tennessee with a population more than twenty five thousand. That you want to put us in debt for something equal to the most successful county in East Tennessee? There's no logic in doing that. It makes no sense of what you're doing here. You're getting ready to bankrupt us. And we're going to end up putting the bill, and we're going to be the one losing while y'all go home loading your back pockets.
Tell me your comments, anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Okay, you have to come to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Natalie Gilbert. Natalie Gilbert, I'm eight one seven four, East Andrew Johnson Highway. I moved into Tennessee last year. I'm new to the county. I come from Virginia. What you are about to build does not make any sense. That sounds like a courthouse in Fairfax County, Virginia. When I looked up the crime rate here, it doesn't compare to why you would need a jail of this size in this county. And I agree with them. They're about to bankrupt us for what? The crime rate does not say that you get jailed of this size in this county. So the question is, what is this really about? We carry so much on our back. And the worst part today, let's say it doesn't have to do with you. I got a letter on the job that I work for, I'm disability, one hundred percent disabled. And I had a letter today to tell me that my pension is now canceled, December thirty first, twenty twenty one. And you want to put this on my back too? Please, don't do this to us. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Felicia Esch, I'm in Elche, and at the twenty six forty five Mountain View Drive. People now are trying to figure out how the economy is going, you know, everything's going up hardly. And I'm going to, you know. Do you really think we need a new jail? The only people I see that really want this jail is everybody over here. I don't see people behind me screaming jail. Okay, who's going to pay for the jail? We, the people, that's me and these people. Our property tax will go up again like it did this year. And the property tax will go up on our house and home insurance too. I don't know about anyone else, but I'm on a fixed income. That means my income is fixed where I am broke all the time. This is wrong. This is a wrong time for a big ticket item like a new jail. Gas prices are up, boom, paper products, utilities, and even our property taxes went up this year. I myself have been shopping at the dollar store and went from quill and northern toilet paper to the cheap off brand just to cut corners. People are just trying to figure out how to get by with this new economy and everything going up. And I wonder why the good, hardworking people that follow the law have to pay for those that are breaking the law criminally? And more likely, when they get out of jail, it won't belong to the back again. I would love if each inmate would pay for the jail adding extra money for their fines and probation because it's them that stay there, not me. It would be nice to see the inmates working on the jail to build the jail since it's them that's going to be using it. And it would be really nice if everybody on the board member and that voted for the jail would pay three times more on their property tax for this. Maybe y'all can afford it, but I don't have the money to spend on it. I don't believe we need a new jail at this time. I think we can wait on this project until our economy is better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Ah, go ahead. I just didn't want them to close up shop.
My name is Mark Murphy. I live in Morestown, living on West Rose. Mr. Chairman, what I would talk about here is the high price something that's going in here, we're going to put our people in. It's a I'm going to, I'm going to start with me, okay? I was raised as a poor boy. First home cost was four on four hundred dollars. Four hundred and fifty dollars. Besides the, by right beside the, the fast store in Goose Hollow. I think it might go over by Goose Hollow. No inside water, no electricity. It was rough for mom and me during World War Two. Dad was discharged December the fourteenth, nineteen forty five. I pulled four years active and four years on STEM by Reserve, U S A L. Both were willing to give our lives for our home and country. Now I'm asking all fourteen commissioners to do what's right for our country and others. This one hundred million plus jail that some want to spend and leave it all to county folk to pay the bill. Jobs here are for all elected to do what's best for the county, not themselves, and you know that. This one hundred million plus is a cost that never should got this far, much less a boat. Do what's right. When it comes up, vote no, for God's sakes, vote no. Don't make this look like Washington.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service and thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
My name is Tony. So the Justice Center. Last meeting, I had spoke that we need to let the choice be made by the citizens in a vote. I have since then been addressed by many people saying that that is a great idea and that is what we need to do. And this was brought up before and it was looked past. For you all to make that decision. We know that we need a new jail. We all know that. But we do not need to strap ourselves that much. We know that the school board, it's fact, the school board's coming back for money. So don't sit up here and say, no, we're not raising taxes to build the jail. You are raising taxes to build the jail. You're just not doing it before you build the jail. You're going to wait for something else to come back. The Hale House Project. It's going up for bid. It needs funding. There's other projects that are going to come along. You saw it just cost you all another sixty thousand dollars for two new garbage trucks. This isn't going to change. Bill Britton stood up here like a salesman last meeting, stating that all the graphs, there's no increase in, in what the economy is going to bring up from new homes and developments and that we're not taking that in consideration. You know what we're not taking in consideration? The speed of inflation versus the little difference in growth. That's what we are missing. So to say that everything is going to be smooth is false. You're looking at a facade instead of looking at the real deal. We can't afford this jail. We need this jail, but we can't afford it. Nor can the people that are currently incarcerated and that will be incarcerated in the next three years wait three years to get into a new facility. We need something that we can do a single pod, move over the first two hundred people and keep building. That way we can get the amount of inmates down that is there now. With less inmates, it can run a little bit more efficiently. Yes, will it not be cost effective really at the beginning because you're splitting them up? No, but we're going to need those employees eventually anyways. So we might as well get them on board, give them a little training before we throw anybody into a, just a new facility. They need to understand what it is like to work with these inmates so that they can better another new facility.
Tommy, thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Yes, sir.
My name is Christopher Collins. I live at twenty seven ninety two Helen Gentry Road here in Moretown, Tennessee. I have not been able to make a lot of these meetings due to working schedule, but that's what you guys have on the schedule. However, I'm here today and I have one big question. One plus one equals ninety two million. One we need in a jail. The other one you guys have presented to, and nobody lies. As it's been said before, it's going to put this county in debt. Debt that my children will have to deal with, that my grandchildren will possibly have to deal with. Last I checked, every man and lady that is sitting here reporting out is an elected official. You campaigned to be the voice of the people in your district. Am I correct? Voting yes tonight will not only cause you guys to lose the respect of your people in your district, but will also potentially cause you to lose your next election.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Robert seven twenty one, I'm sir. So I stand with everybody here that has said so far that they oppose this for multiple reasons. You have seen multiple people from multiple walks of life come up here and tell you why this is not a good fit for them, for their families, for their children, their grandchildren, et cetera. We have people that live on fixed incomes that you're well aware of that we've heard tonight. We have people that have recently just moved into the community. I dare say, if she knew that this was coming down on, on her, the potential, she would have looked another way and chose not to live in Hamblin County. There are many options for people to live anywhere they like. And she chose at that point probably wisely because Hamblin County's got a lot of great things going for them, for us. However, if we continue to put ourselves in debt, as other people have said, put this burden on our backs, not your backs, because yes, you got to eat a piece of it. But you're not on a fixed income, income like many of these people are. So if we have to put this on our backs, what is that going to look like? What is that looking like for our family, our children, the next generation? And I'm just concerned, just the same as that, that woman that might have not, might not have lived in Hamblin County. She knew these taxes were coming, that these increases were coming. She would have looked elsewhere. I'm concerned that my children will look elsewhere when it's time to buy. I'm concerned that your children, your grandchildren, great grandchildren will look for somewhere else to buy as well. Because it is no longer, according to what this commission is trying to do, it is no longer economically efficient for a lot of people to live here. And you're pushing those people out. And then where's your tax revenue? And it's been said before, Commissioner Gohn, I believe, by you, I believe, if I recall from the last meeting, that we are very divided, not just in this room, in this county, in this commission, and, and in the community, country as a whole. And I agree with you, we are very divided. But I see behind you a lot of people that are standing fast on their part beliefs of what is best for their community. I see a lot of people that are coming to their commissioners, asking for you to hear their voice, that you were put in this position as, as elected for their voice, and they're coming to you, hearing their voice. I'm not seeing that many of you listen to that voice. So yes, we are divided. But in many ways, it's because you're not listening to the people that put you in that seat that you're sitting in tonight. And I'm a little disappointed in that. But one thing that we're not divided back here is that we, you said before, before that there's a certain group in the room. You're even sitting on opposite sides of earth. But I chose on purpose to sit on this side to say, listen, I am not with these people specifically. Yes, these are, from what I can tell, good people. What I am for is this community. I am for my family, and I am for the people that want to do what's best for this community. Where do your intentions lie? Thank you.
Thank you, good comment. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Karen Harwood, fifteen oh one Elrod Road. I just want to reiterate, at the last meeting, you had Mayor Bill Britton saying up here with his charts and everything and saying, oh, we, we're going to be able to do this without any increase on taxes, et cetera. Yes, that may be, may be true on the bonds and everything to build it. But what is not being taken into consideration on beyond the fact that it will max out the debt on this county. So therefore, if anything comes up, anything happens, as you always, you always see, you're always got different answers, sections asking, we need this, we need that. But not only for this jail, a house that many people. Your medical costs are going to increase from the increase. You increase the number of people, then this is going to increase. Everything I listed, your medical costs, food costs, salaries for additional employees, demand the jail. Not, think about this big of a building, a hundred million dollar building. Do you not think that your liability and or building insurance is going to go up tremendously? Think about it. Uniforms, training, clothing, just for the inmates. Think of every day to day operation of everything that goes into operating a jail on a daily basis or even on a monthly. Some months based on the medical costs, not only for having the fifty three, fifty three thousand plus per month that's tied in, that's spoken for, for the health group that actually is responsible for having people in the jail now to take care of all the inmates. But the outside expenses, specialty, going to the hospitals, dentistry, you name it, all the expenses that each and every one of us would incur in life in general. The Hamblin people of Hamblin County are responsible for every single solitary day to day life expense for everybody in jail. Southeastern Health Partners is over fifty three thousand dollars a month right now. I don't know a new contract for that many, that many more incarcerated people plus all the going to hospital, et cetera. Think about day to day expenses for that many more people. That's where our taxes will be increased.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Anyone else?
My name is Lauren Stewart, and I'm in East Asia. I just recently moved here as well, and I'm from Oregon, Virginia. Kind of a big mixing pot of people. And the thing I love the most about when I moved here is that it was such a warm, safe community, lots of love. I didn't have to look over my back to see who was behind me, sometimes try to shove me in a car. And I can't imagine what would happen if you built a jail so big in this county and filled it up with so many criminals. What that would do to the feeling of safety and community in the neighborhood? If you're not going to build a jail that big and not fill it up. So it just makes me wonder, the next time I go out by myself at night, how safe am I going to feel? How's that going to affect the edginess of other people in the community? It's just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Richard Seals, Old Kentucky Road. What you all have failed to realize is us as citizens vote that you're here to be our voice. If you vote yes, it's disgusting display because you do not listen and feel your own agenda. None of the staff players want to burden this cost. You need to listen to us, that's your job, that's what you vote against.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Yes, sir, Brian.
One hundred eighty one fifty West Point Drive. I've been coming here for eight years. I say the same old thing all the time. Nothing ever changes. And Mr. Horner, you ain't in my corner. Not if you vote for that judge, I'm sorry. I have nothing against you.
Keep your, keep your comments straight to the chair.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Horner's not in my corner. Thank you. And I have nothing against Mr. Horner. I just don't think you should vote for a hundred million dollar jail. Any other jail. And if you want to make money in the jail, put the jail people to work. Make them clean up the niceness that's in the jail. Give them a job. Pay them a, a minimum wage salary. Let them provide for themselves. We don't need a new jail, not a four story jail. We need a new jail. But now, who's going to say and who's going to check it out to make sure it gets? But now, who's gonna say and who's gonna check it out to make sure it gets clean and respectable and it's kept up? You didn't do it the last time. What makes you think, what makes you think I believe you'll do it this time? I mean, come on, you, that jail is filthy. And you know, it has to be cleaned. Your kids don't clean it, so, my house don't clean itself, I have to clean it. And you know, give, give the people that break the law some responsibility. And don't tell them they have to sign off on everything they do. And you talk about mold and mildew. There's mold and mildew in people's houses where they live. What about them? And they get up every day and they work. And they don't ask you for nothing. They pay their taxes and live in mold and mildew houses. But the people at Great Falls, they can't live in mold and mildew. They might sin you, or you've had plenty of that. You know, I don't understand the law. I don't blame this for the jails, I blame this for the unjets. Cause I've sinned too much of it. If you vote for this jail, I feel sorry for all of you. Cause what goes around comes around. And people are getting sick of paying all the time for people that don't wanna do the right thing. And you're supposed to be truthful and honest, especially if you're going to church. So see, he don't think of you for whether I see if you're truthful or honest or not. God knows y'all, he sees everything. So you better be careful what you do, what you have to answer for.
Thank you, Glenn. Ms. Noe.
I am divided. You want to end it divided, oh, if I had a bit.
Well, I would have preferred to have him watch his speaking.
Started, you'll have a sheet that has one sheet with another line, but I highlight. You'll have your calendar, your calendar from September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, with the attachments. And you'll have an exhibit D, which is a resolution you passed out of committee in November twenty nineteen. You have before you a special, a special call meeting, two items on the agenda. Your ninety-two million dollar jail and a bond resolution for ten million. You could solve your jail problem for sixty million dollars if you wanted to. And that's what the people want. It's not that we say we don't need a jail. We need an affordable jail, a simple jail, a safe jail, and one that we could actually staff. And that's a one-level jail like, like Coffee County. I'm not saying you have to do exactly what they do, but like Coffee County. But let me get to what the problem we have today. And Mr. Cuthyard, you've been taking notes, take notes right now. There is a motion to approve that contract. You better raise a point of order because this does not comply with the ten-day rule. The ten-day rule is the past, to your regular calendar, the item that I gave you with the attachments. And this is what the ten-day rule is. It's not that the commissioners get something. Ten-day rule, this was the clarification. Contracts will be put in the regular committee packets to be discussed at the committee meeting, but no action will be taken until the subsequent county commission meeting. So you have not complied with the ten-day rule. Just cause Mr. Britton came out here and said, oh, you approved a, you approved the bid. And that's the other problem, Mr. Horner. You did, your motion was to approve the low bid of Blaine Construction and Alternates one through three for ninety-two million, two hundred eight thousand, and move forward with contract negotiations. That's what you all passed. Not to approve entering into a contract. That's where Mr. Britton stepped in and threw stuff out at you. So keep in mind, you've been really big and tight on these rules. You cannot vote on this contract because it hasn't gone through the ten-day rule, the true ten-day rule. And another thing you had was that, that one-page sheet, the resolution that you have, the ten-million resolution, it's a contract. It has to go through committee for the ten-day rule. Give the people a break, postpone this table it. Thank you.
Thank you, good comment. I have a good question, it's more. Wondering where the county attorney is.
Yeah.
He gets paid for it.
It's a habit.
Anybody else who wants you to address the commission?
Hi, my name is Teresa Archer, I live at fifteen oh two Island Road. Only thing I gotta say, guys, is you best not do it because, and I know you go to the grocery store because it's insane there. Things are gonna get worse. Things are gonna go higher. People don't wanna work now. I retire in April. I have a friend who owns a restaurant that's in here where they cannot staff it at fifteen dollars an hour. I'm gonna be there four days a week and working for him so he can staff his restaurant to make it a living. That's just not going on over there, that's going on here. People are not gonna work in the next generation because the beds are handed out money. That money's not free, we see that at the gas. And another thing, the majority of you all were elected to be good stewards of our money, and the most of you ran on a Republican ticket. Republicans are conservative. So if you seek reelection and you vote for this, switch to your other party because evidently you're a Democrat in this shit. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? There are no other comments then? Yes, sir.
I don't know what, what y'all doing, cause to be honest with you, I don't pay a whole lot of attention unless something like this comes up. My name's Steve Conway. I live up on the hillside, which is up high and up there. And once the mailbox, they go yesterday, got my pump on the interior field. Last week, Mr. Long sent me my county tax bill. I signed it down a couple days ago, they give a city tax bill. And one of the things that I really object to is the design of the building. I don't think you'd ought to get a three-story building or whatever because that's got to take more people to cover three stories than it does one because in a horseshoe shape, you can have your control center in the middle of it, and you see the whole jail. So I, I don't see any reason for having to hire all these people and all that stuff. As far as needing a jail, I don't know, I guess we do need a jail, but if prisoners up there are crapping, done. Being crowded and stuff, put them on a troop ship. They'll see what crime it is on a troop ship. That's not a hotel, that's a jail. You know, I don't have any sense of the ball. Because if I break the law, I expect to be out there. And I think anybody that does that ought to be out there. But as far as, that's a lot of money, we just, I don't know, somebody could vote for all living in the city. And we just got to build one, we can call it in the hall, or we're in the process of building it, Jefferson County, down here now. Us, we build a big ride down there that was in New York City, I guess, it's magnificent jail. I mean, it's really a pretty place, and I'm sure this jail will be a pretty place. But we don't need nothing in Jefferson City. We don't need no commuter center, we don't need no big fancy three-story jail rooms, that's all it is to it. And a hundred million dollars, a lot of money, it's worth it. Joe Biden might have sent it down here, we can't get everything, you know.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? There ain't nobody else, we'll proceed with the agenda, item number A. Mayor Britt.
Before I get to the contract, I want to bring, bring to your attention, if you look at the budget, the Justice Center budget that's in front of you, I want to bring to your attention an error I made in calculating the budget that was presented on the twenty-first. In the design fee for, for Mosley. The contract with Mosley is, says that the fee will be based on the construction amount that is signed with the construction company. And in the budget that I had before you on the twenty-first, it didn't have the ninety-two million number. It was calculated on, on a lower number that we had used previously. And that was just an oversight on my part. So after I recognized that, I contacted Dan Mace with Mosley. We negotiated what to base the, the fee on and agreed that to base it on the low bid from April. Not the ninety-two million, but the eighty-eight million from April. So the, the design fee that will pay Mosley is based on the eighty-eight million dollar low bid from April. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. What is that about? It's in the budget, the total for the whole, the, the fee calculation is based on two things. One is based on the first twenty-five million, it's six percent of the first twenty-five million, and then five and a half percent from there to the construction amount, which is eighty-eight million. So the total is five million, three seventy-four eighteen.
Yeah.
No comments from the audience, just kind of put it here.
Okay, and also in your packet is the, the contract, the standard AI contract with Lane Construction Company, the review, it was prepared by, by Mosley Architects, and reviewed by your project manager from Burbank and your county attorney. And everything's in order, and we recommend.
What do we stand as far as this ten-day rule, like the comments that been made, but there's no?
It's, this contract, it's been before you for ten days.
Don't you dare.
It's been before you for ten days.
We're talking about ten-day rule, Bill.
Okay, any, any other questions from the mayor?
Art, we need your look at this ten-day thing, we need to see if we're right on it or wrong on it.
I don't have a copy of any of this information, but I can say that.
I'll be glad to give you one.
County attorney, could you respond to that? Thank you, I appreciate that as well. Thank you. Good attorney, there's a question on the ten-day rule that it deals with, the question has to do with going through committee in a, for, for the committee discuss and.
I don't know that the ten-day rule applies to committee because it's not a final action. And we're not taking action on it, on contract. That's be my.
We're taking action on the contract tonight and also on a resolution to borrow ten, an additional ten million dollars.
Step up to the podium.
Please.
So it's under record.
I, I'm very all, thank you. You talking about for committee or for the commission?
Well, we're in a commission meeting now.
Yes.
And it's, it's one, Ms. Noe, go ahead and share your concern again, I don't have that right in front of me now.
Thank you. It's the one that has three sheets. Sorry, thank you. It's the one that has three sheets. And this is when you voted in September of twenty twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Twelve of you, well, with fourteen voted to keep the ten-day rule. The only ones that voted to get rid of the ten-day rule were Howard Shipley and Jim Stepp. Right behind that, in the same minutes, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, there is the ten-day rule. It was clarified in twenty fifteen and it is still in effect. And that ten-day rule says contracts will be put in the regular committee packets to be discussed at the committee meeting, but no action will be taken until the subsequent county commission meeting, normally ten days after the monthly committee meeting. You're welcome to have a copy, I think you need it.
Okay, so, thanks for your, we're now down to the committee.
And that's what the ten-day rule says.
Without, without the ability to look into that further, I mean, if that's what the ten-day rule says, and we're trying to comply with it, then that's what the ten-day rule says.
You need to just staple this.
It's like everybody's first day.
Is there a motion to suspend?
Oh, my God.
No comments, please, from the audience. We gave you an opportunity to speak. You spoke. It's time now for the commissioners to discuss among themselves, who are trying to seek a legal opinion. Sir?
If, if you have a motion to suspend the ten-day rule?
You could, if you take two-thirds of the vote, which are to vote to suspend the ten-day rule.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the ten-day rule. Is there a second to that motion? A second.
I, I'll second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is.
On suspending the ten-day rule?
My, my discussion, I'd like to hear others' thoughts. We, we discussed this. I, I mean, in our previous meeting, you did not go from, I guess you'd say actual committee, but the whole thing was discussed as far as where we were headed, what our idea was. It wasn't new, we were taking, at that point, we all knew what was going on. I've had the contract in hand, if we need to sit back and do the committee, I, I'll, I'll do that. But it, I, I don't see that it changes anything.
It doesn't, and you know, what, what's, what's this? We have postponed, 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 and that's why we're in the position we're in now, because we postponed, postponed, postponed. I, 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 no, for twelve years, we have postponed this thing, and we need to make, we need to move on this thing before it gets. we need to move on this thing before it gets any more specific.
I just feel like we, we did in the, in the idea that we did what's being asked.
Anyone else who wish, there's a need there?
Mr. Shipley, uh, ten-day rule says it's gotta go back through the committee. This contract is not going back through the committee.
Well, we understand that way.
Okay, well, my, my thing is, you know, why you gotta rule and then somebody wants to suspend it? It says it's gotta go to contract, it's gotta go back to the committee, but nobody voted on that commission. We, we need to get this thing right, you don't need to be playing around with it.
Okay. Every...
I think the, the spirit of the ten-day rule is, is being followed, and that is that you present it to the committee, okay? That's what the, the verbiage says, which is, in, in the Justice Center, project committee, it's a full commission. It was presented to the full commission on the, on the twenty-first day of, uh, October. And now, before the full commission, there could, there could be a vote. So it went before the commission, which is larger than the committee, and it actually makes up the committee. And now, before the commission, this is, this is following the spirit of the ten-day rule. It's just a matter of semantics.
We don't even need a motion and a second, but we've got one on the board. You want to do it?
Okay.
All right, let's go back to the, uh, the motion to, to suspend the, the ten-day rule. Is there any more discussion on the motion to suspend the ten-day rule? Let's call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of suspending the rule. If you vote no, you don't want to suspend the rule. Call the roll, ladies.
Do you have paper?
No.
President Hetchaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
No.
Thomas Stone? Tim Gover?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
No.
Tim Porter?
No.
Joe Heslin?
No.
Ali Norman? MacRee?
No.
Wayne Niesmier?
No.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stepp?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
No.
Your, yes. None, no.
Emotion, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. Where we work with the contract. What's the will of the body?
Well, just like the mayor just said a minute ago, uh, you present, uh, on the twenty-first, was that what, is that correct? Twenty-first of October, it was presented to us. More than ten days. So, I think like I said a minute ago, I don't think we need, uh, need, need a vote, but...
You have a rule. You didn't suspend it.
Mr. Shipley, the com, this says it goes through the committee. It didn't go, say about us getting here to discuss. There looks a word in our...
I'm asking, I'm asking for a motion.
I want to say this, we, uh, it was April, March or April, we were all set to go, and we didn't like the bids, they were too high. So we come back and we made a few cuts.
It's getting higher.
And, uh, in six months or whatever, it went up, what, almost five percent? So every day we let this thing go on, it's getting costly and costly. We can't keep putting this off. I said it the last week, it's time to move on it. I have a change. I think we need to move it. We talk about inflation. This thing's gonna cost us a whole lot more money, it's already gone up.
Not if we build smaller.
Exactly.
Over five...
No comments from the audience?
Over five percent, by the way, since March or April, never was. That's a lot of money, and it's continuing to grind away as we put this off and we put it off.
Go just to jail.
Just do it the right way. That's all I'm asking. You cannot...
We need a jail, that's what we need, we need the jail.
All right, any, uh, we still don't have a motion.
I'll make a motion, we continue.
Continue with what?
Continue on with, with the, uh, presentation under deal.
If we approve the contract?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
I will second that motion.
For the motion, is there a second that we approve the contract?
You're facing a lawsuit.
On that motion? Hearing no discussion? Call the roll, a yes vote, is she approved the contract? A no vote, you do not approve the contract.
Do you have paper?
No.
President Hetchaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
No.
Tim Gover?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
No.
Tim Porter?
No.
Joe Heslin?
No.
Ali Norman?
Yes.
MacRee?
No.
Wayne Niesmier?
No.
Howard Shipley?
Uh, yes.
Jim Stepp?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
No.
Okay, uh, the, uh, motion, thank you. Contract is on present. So, I guess there was no need to go on to the next item, Mr. Chris?
Nope.
Is there a contract?
Chair, can we proceed on with the hearing? What we have here is a procedural problem. Can we go ahead and hear what he has to say so that we can at least be given more thought to digest?
And he's gonna be speaking on the bond issue.
No, it's not gonna go down.
Okay.
No, if, it would come back, if it doesn't happen now, we'll still have to do it at some point. This is not gonna go down. And so...
Well, you're, you're in a dilemma right now because you didn't approve contract. So you're gonna, I guess, take it to the committee and then approve the contract? Okay, all right. Chris, they wanna hear you out. And do you still have time to do this? Do you need to hear next week?
I'm fine, yes, I'm, yeah. Chris Bessler, Commonwealth Securities out of Knoxville, Tennessee. Before you got a bond resolution, you guys all know, I'll know that, uh, we've been up here before you a couple of times, we approved both an eighty-five million dollar initial resolution and a forty-two million, uh, four-hundred thousand dollar resolution previously. Both of those were, uh, procedural, as we went through before. So to make sure we were writing about sunshine laws and state giving citizens opportunity to protest the planned issuance of debt. To be able to move forward on an actual bond issue, the county has to adopt a bond resolution. So you've already done one, uh, previously, that did some schools and, and, um, some of the preliminary, uh, cost, thought costs for the Justice Center. Uh, and those bonds were issued in two thousand twenty, uh, before you, this ten million dollars. And the reason to, um, have this, uh, resolution before you is, this would just be the next bond issue. So you basically put together a master plan for how you're gonna fund your whole project. When you have larger projects that tend to take two to three years to finance or construct, I'm sorry, to construct, you, uh, oftentimes will not issue all of the debt at one time. So that way, you're not paying on debt that you haven't actually spent the money on that might not be spent for another couple of years. And so this ten million dollars, just issue, continue moving forward. If you all approve the contract, it is the next opportunity to be able to do so. Uh, the plan here is to do ten million dollar bond issue and to do that this calendar year to be able to utilize the county's, uh, allocation for bank qualification. So that is a law that goes back to nineteen eighty-six. It allows you to issue up to ten million dollars in a calendar year that qualifies, uh, where banks can get, uh, an extra exemption on carrying that. So it lowers the overall cause of that debt to whoever issues it. So that is the strategy here. Go ahead and, and issue that debt, loads it up prior to the end of the year. Uh, in terms of timing on that, we, we will need to get moving on the grading process. The county, uh, to this point, has incurred no costs on this ten million dollar bond issue. We can hold the rating, uh, conference call for the, with the credit committee until such time as you approve it. And then, as you approve the contract, then we can go ahead and have them release it forward and then be ready to go within a couple of days. Without that, it does take a little bit longer, um, to be able to, to, to this process of getting the credit rating. So, could you go ahead and approve this? Absolutely, you could approve this right now, it doesn't run into any issue. Um, many times, issuers will go ahead and approve the entire project in a bond resolution. The approach that we've taken here with the county is, before each bond issue, we'll come back to you, with, you know, where that bond issue is. That way, you still have control over the overall decisions.
Okay. Anybody else got questions?
Right.
Uh, Chris?
This bond issue, I think we're not, I don't, I believe the way I see it, and I've read it, and we will, we will be needing this money till two thousand and twenty-three.
Sorry?
Two thousand and twenty-three is, get the bond, but we won't be taking any money out of it till two thousand and twenty-three. I work out there.
I think on that construction of it would be breaking ground pretty quickly here, is my understanding on the construction schedule. And so I think that the money would be being spent pretty quickly. And I think basically what I've, I've looked at, run out within a few months.
It says two thousand and twenty-three, we had a schedule, the money was gonna be spent for enough years, for enough tariffs, and a license, two thousand and twenty-three.
If I'm understanding, or if I'm understanding what you're referring to, I'm thinking that might be the schedule for bond issues that are coming. So this would be the, the next bond issue right here, then there would be another one, maybe mid-summer, then two thousand twenty-two, and then the final one coming in early two thousand twenty-three. So that would be the last bond issue.
Not that, this would be the last.
So, what, what I presented on the twenty-first was, was the bond issue, not the spend-down schedule for the construction, the spend-down schedule for the construction. But, well, the bond issue schedule that I showed you is based on the spend-down schedules that, um, have been submitted. And then we showed them to Cumberland Securities, and then they came up with the plan.
What was the spend-down schedule? Was there a twenty, be used in two thousand twenty-three?
Be used in, it'll be...
Ten, ten B.
It'll be used in two thousand twenty-two, it'll be used next, next spring in town.
I guess what I've got wrong.
Any other questions? All right, what's the will of the body?
We have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the bond resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion on approving the bond resolution?
Without suspending the rules, it's a contract.
All right, Ms. Loewy wants the rule suspended.
No, I don't.
Well...
I'm just telling you what you have to do if you want to go on.
Well, I can tell you, uh, unless the rules are suspended, you'll be sued. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, and, and like, the other one going back to committee, it's hard to, like this, when Mr. Bessler has explained it, I say, oh, hard, and playing on that, that one as well.
All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion, if we can send this and put it back to committee, and say, it's not Omar.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any second. Any discussion as to deferring the bond resolution back to the committee? Hearing none, then, all those in favor, like to be known as saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, so I assume it's unanimous. That free will concludes the business, I've got one announced, five, the chairman.
You see, commissioners, because of one citizen, you all saved yourself from a lawsuit because you listened to one citizen. You all don't even know the rules of order in the, in the meetings. I mean, we really need to take a step back and, and, and understand how the process. I mean, you, you agree? We, you all need to understand the process a little bit. So, sitting right here, we got the guy from, um, the newspaper. And, uh, he's got, he's sitting there on the other side where we are not allowed. What? You didn't tell him to? So you putting me out for a cause? Meeting's over. Hey, don't erase that, I'm making a FOIA request for that.
Yeah, I know.
Cribley, C-R-I-B-L-E-Y. Hey, what's your badge number?
It's, uh, Lieutenant Cribley, one fifteen.
All right, I'll be requesting that body cam. All right, so going right out that door, right there, was the guy from the newspaper. So you see how unfair, they're very biased here. So, that was evidence right there, so if they ever try to kick me out, we will definitely have enough evidence to show that they are coming towards me because, uh, of my aspect. Look at all these people, this is the most people we've ever had here, folks. We need more, we need more people to show up. We have another opportunity on this. Y'all need to show up. Hey, look, it's the Shitly Two.
So y'all didn't punish it, did you?
Nope.
We had to, we had to get passed.
Yeah.
I knew you would. We're gonna vote for you to pass, you too.
And then a new commission's gonna stomp that down when they get in there.
I don't do stoppings, it'll be even better.
Yeah, you right, you right.
How you gonna kick me out of a public place, Chad? Of course you're not gonna talk to me. Good luck on running for sheriff, man, because I'm gonna be a hundred percent not backing you. you. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna. Hey, before, I'll be requesting that, so make sure it gets in there ASAP. So there's Chad Mullins, guys, running for sheriff. He ain't going to win. All that tyranny that's in there now, nobody wants that.